Oh, all right.
Well, they it was cool.
Yeah.
He was just trying to outdo Vince because Vince just gave him all a sticker and see and I maybe like. Yeah, see. They they.
I know. Is she coming? Oh, she isn't.
All right. We will begin the work study session for the Adrian City Commission for March eighteenth, two thousand twenty-four. We'll call please.
Mayor Heath.
President.
Commissioner Banky.
President.
Commissioner Schwartz.
President.
Commissioner Roberts, President. Commissioner Miller.
President.
Commissioner Castleberry. President. Commissioner Goss.
Oh, yeah, I'm here. Maybe I should pay attention.
Commissioners present with the exception of.
Oh, I'm not all.
At this time, I will turn it over to our city administrator, Greg Elliott.
Thank you, Mayor. So we all saw our schedule and we're doing this as we've done in recent years with the department heads who have the largest portions of the budget explaining new and different and significant. This year to you, we asked them all to prepare their own summary of the highlights. Scheduled a half an hour for each of them, starting with, as it's our new custom utilities department. Well, Sandler is here. That, I know he's passed out suddenly, I'll turn it over now.
Thank you, sir.
No, I'm sorry. I don't know this. Oh, my name.
Oh, this is Scott Baker. He's.
I work with. Berks, those Berks. Scott, so you're stuck with me.
All right.
Okay, so I divided by summary down into two parts, really, three parts, sewer water and then a summary of the rates. So, starting with the sewer. Three different departments there wastewater treatment plant with the lift stations, a slight increase in budget over last year. About forty-two thousand dollars. And the summary of the of the biggest increases or decreases are in the wages, electrical costs. Keeping of the of the plant buildings. And a small increase in consultant fees. Just to help, that helps me out a little bit consulting with engineers and stuff, just to kind of take some of the load off of me a little bit. And then that coupled with a forty thousand dollar decrease in sludge lagoon services. For the year, you'll actually see when we talk about capital projects, there's actually a fifty thousand dollar project down there to clean out one of the digestors. So that kind of offsets each other. Sanitary sewers, still that was awful, also pretty flat, more increase in consultant fees. Gas, lube, nanofreeze, gas specifically, we've got two vector trucks now on the road that we use routinely, so those use up a lot of fuel. And then twelve thousand five hundred dollar increase in supplies, whether that's for sewer repairs, building repairs or so forth, just a combination of those. And then on the admin overhead portion, a larger increase, which is mostly due to personnel costs, like pension contribution, social security. Increase thirty-three thousand dollar increase in health care costs. And again, increase in consultant fees of about fifteen thousand dollars. So that's those three sections there are pretty much the operating budget, you know, the things we do every single day. The next section is capital projects for the year. A pretty good, pretty good increase in budgets for projects to do next year. And I've outlined some of the stuff that's kind of new. We always do certain projects every year miscellaneous repairs. Replacement of equipment that was unexpected to be replaced, things like that. Some of the new things, digester cleaning. We need to get one of our secondary digestors cleaned out, so we estimated about fifty thousand for that. We'll have to contract that out, so we'll have to come in and do that for us. Filter panel upgrades, thirty-five thousand dollars. That's for the actual controls for the filters, which are forty years old. So it's time to get those upgraded. A new pump at the Broad Street Pump Station, that's our main lift station down there by Island Park. Hundred thousand dollars for that replacement. The flex rake head replacement, you've probably seen that before, two two different meetings, we have two of those rakes at the Broad Street. We've replaced those, now it's time to replace the one at the plant. Those are pieces of equipment that run twenty-four seven and they've been in service since around ninety-seven or ninety-eight, so they they run a lot. Very maintenance. Um, we need to put again a generator in our O and M building. Right now, when the power goes out, we can't operate our overhead doors. And other things, plus the phone system and the internet system works through that building and goes to the wastewater plant. So when they lose power up the road. It kind of, you know, you lose you lose some control down at the plant in terms of phones and internet and so forth. And so that's a generator, we figure about forty thousand dollars. The parking lot is due to get sealed and striped, so we estimated twenty thousand for that. And we are due to replace a one-ton dump truck with a with a plow, the self-spreeder, I think the one that we have is a two thousand and six model. And we're looking at buying a couple of new trailers to haul our pipe when we do water mains and to haul equipment, we just bought a skister last year, so we need to be able to transport that around town. And then again, typical annual items that we that we budget every year valve replacement. Cure and place projects, manhole restoration and so forth. Fixed expenses, pretty flat. And those include the Johnson Control Project, so our payments on that go like about fourteen thousand dollars. Nothing super exciting on the sewer side. Anybody have any questions?
Well, I'll total how many employees do you have in your.
Total, I believe, is thirty-eight, I think. Thirty-seven, thirty-eight. Water fund, water treatment plants, we'll start with that. You're going to see quite a significant increase for budget there, and that's mainly due to the chemical costs. You know, we use sodium hypochlorite for disinfection, we use lime for softening. Expenses are just going crazy on chemicals. And there's times where we did, we weren't sure we were going to even get chemical deliveries because it got that bad. Part of it was COVID and we're still kind of feeling that effect, so. Hundred fifty-one thousand dollar increase in funding at the water treatment plant. Again, some of its wages, chemical costs, contract services for labs, we send out more samples now than we've ever done for. Obviously, with late conditions, with additional samples that the Eagle requires. Some of them we can't run in-house, so we send them off to contract labs, so increase in that. Still trying to get more lime out of that back lagoon, so we increased the contract services for lime removal at the lagoon by about twenty-five thousand. And then electrical costs, we're a little bit behind on that, so we figure about a thirty thousand dollar increase in electrical costs at the plant. Distribution system, that's the water main guys, water main and sewer, sanitary sewer guys, they're the same department, they they work on both. Again, seventy-eight thousand dollar increase, most of it is in wages and overtime. Twenty thousand dollars in operating supplies, though it could be things for repairing main breaks and so forth, clamps, et cetera. And increasing in consultant fees. Admin overhead, hundred forty-one thousand dollar increase, and again, most of that is personnel costs. Sixty-two thousand dollars in pension contribution, thirty-six thousand in healthcare costs. Twelve thousand in wages, increase in sewer service charges of about ten thousand. And a couple small increases in consultant fees and postage again. So tho- those three are basically the operating, operating budget of the utilities department on the water side. For capital projects, I increased the well maintenance to seventy-five thousand. We've been looking at trying to find ways to get more water out of there. And we've got people investigating those options right now. It may be the ability to put another well in there, if that's the case, seventy-five thousand will cover it, won't even be to put a down payment on it. But other options are potentially upsizing pumps. These are all conversations that we're going to have to have with Eagle to investigate those, so. I did increase the, normally we budget about thirty-five thousand, but I I added forty thousand to that. Elevated tank maintenance, that is for the fairgrounds water tank. It is due for coating on the inside and the outside. This will cover one of those. So the full project estimate we got last year to do the inside and the outside was about five hundred and fifty thousand to do both. What I'd like to do this year is bid that out as one to one and then have the alternative doing both at the same time, just to see if we get a good price to do both. Because a lot of times you might save on mobilization costs and so forth, but to do both, we're probably. Our quote was, our estimate was from late last year, so if you add another year onto that, you know, it may be pushing six hundred thousand dollars. And it's not just for the coating, it's for other repairs on there, putting in, bring it up to current day standard, that tank is was built nineteen thirty-nine. So there's other things that we can, OSHA, like the catwalk, the ladders, the manhole, the manway entrance and stuff can all get upgraded, so all that would be done at the same time. And the coatings typically last about fifteen to twenty years. And the last time this was done was two thousand and six, so we're we're a little bit over the fifteen years, but they recommended that we do this project within the next one to two years. So if we do half of it this year and half of it next year, we're good. I'll probably bid it out as one giant package just. Uh, cross off the floor meter replacement, I just forgot to remove that, that was from last year. Water main service lines, four hundred and fifty thousand dollars, that's we budget about that much every year, our crew replaces the service lines, we install water main. Back there getting ready to start a water main, probably in the next week. We want to get some new trench boxes, we had one that we shared with a contractor, but we want to get our own. And some locating equipment, that's to help trace trace down water service lines and water mains and stuff like that, so we like to purchase that equipment. Fixed expenses, a little bit higher, and then that includes the Johnson Control Costs. Increase of about fifteen thousand dollars. Okay, now that leads us to the rate increase and my recommendation, and I don't just pull these numbers out of the sky, there's a. Petra Tech did a nice study for us back in two thousand and fifteen, two thousand and sixteen. It's a huge spreadsheet, I plug in all the expenditures, I plug in what we expect to have in billable sales for our units sold of water and sewer and all kinds of stuff, and it and it comes out with these nice numbers. So overall, an increase of about four point eight nine percent on an average residential water and sewer bill. So that would increase from about seventy-five eighty to about seventy-nine fifty-one. Or about three dollars and seventy-one cents a year. Did a little bit of research and twenty twenty-three, the average US combined water and sewer bill was about a hundred and twenty-one dollars a month. So we're well below that number. And the average annual rate increase is about four point one percent. And you can see historically for the last ten years, we're raising rates about two point four percent a year. This year will be a little bit of a correction with that four point eight nine, just because we had a few years in there that were zero percent, one of them is, you know, as recently as the COVID year. Those, so that's my recommendations on the rate increases. Future projects, right now I'm working with Manic Smith to put together a project plan for another state revolving fund project on the clean water side, and this one would be geared towards some sanitary sewer improvements to help eliminate some of the sanitary sewer overflows that we get occasionally. The SRF funds are a combination of grant dollars and low interest loan dollars. So every community is eligible for certain amounts, I think we would potentially qualify for more grant dollars than loan dollars, so that's a positive thing. But again, we would concentrate on some of the sanitary sewer improvements. Also, some upgrades at the wastewater treatment plant, the main switchgear where the power comes in, that thing was put in in nineteen seventy-eight, seventy-nine. When the plant last expanded. So it's, you know, it's forty-four years old now and it's probably at its its expected lifespan, so we need to get that replaced. Add an automatic transfer switch for our generator, right now if the power goes out, somebody gets the call to go out there and manually get all the power flipped over, which. Not a fun job. And then to replace various MCCs or motor control centers, those are individual electrical panels, big panels in each of the buildings, so there's several that are due to get replaced. Broad Street pump station upgrades, including the force main replacement, right now there are two eighteen-inch force mains that run that sewer is pumped from that pump station to the wastewater plant. We would like to get those replaced and upsized so that we can convey more flow to the plant. And that would also require some pump replacement. And then there's several large valves at the plant that we'd like to get replaced, so try to roll this all into a big project. Would be a very positive thing to do. Right now, we just paid off one of our loans, so we, on the sewer side, we had three. And these all originated in the early two thousands, so the first one, we made our last payment in the fall. And on the water side, we have two, and the first one of those was paid off also in the fall. The next one is due to fall off, I think in twenty twenty-seven or twenty-eight on the water side. And then on the sewer side, one will fall off in twenty-six and the other one in twenty-eight. So it's almost like one falls off and then you start another new project and you kind of start over. So. That's the plan right now.
How much more income are you going to get with the increase?
I'd have to look that up as part of the spreadsheet, but what it does is it calculates everything and it tells you what the bottom line is, so. Right now, we're tracking pretty good, I think, talking to Nathan about our revenues are okay, you know, we're on track, so. I'd have to look at the numbers, but I can get that to you. Yeah.
We haven't seen a bump in chemical costs like that in a while, have we?
Yep. No, no. And it's crazy, I mean, and then a lot of times we'll get a call halfway through a budget year and say, hey, we need to raise prices. Or you might not get it. It got to the point where Eagle actually, especially with sodium hypochlorite, which is a disinfectant agent. Eagle actually told us that if we ever had any problems to call them and they would consider, remember the Defense, what is it? Defense Act, the Defense Production Act, they may have to enforce that in order for us to get chemicals. It never got to that, but it was, it was iffy for a little bit, that was during the height of COVID.
I'm sure with some of these projects that are coming up, they're already crunching numbers about some of those ideas, like upgrading eighteen-inch of the.
Yep. Yep, I've got the numbers back at my desk.
That's all right.
Yeah.
The one I just know they're.
Yes, they're. Yeah. If we did everything I wanted, it's you're probably looking at about ten million dollars.
I've got a couple of questions on the revenue side. In the sewer fund. Are you going to be able to make, I guess, the second six months going to be more more revenues than the first six months, because it looks like they're about the same, they're going to get a little shorter.
It's possible, it's usually about equal, but in the springtime, we do get wet weather and with that, we do, it bumps up a little bit too, because we had that infiltration, especially from the townships. You have to remember, we get blow from the townships as well.
Okay, and then on the water fund. So is the rate increase, you're looking at another, what, seven hundred, eight hundred thousand dollars from the amended budget in twenty-three, twenty-four? Are you expecting that you're going to get that extra money with the rate increase?
No, some of it will be in fund balance, especially for the water tank, because every year we budget thirty-five thousand dollars for water tank elevated maintenance. So essentially, we've already put that money in fund balance, so now we'll draw that down a little. If that makes sense, it's kind of like save it for a company. Save ten grand a year and then five years you buy that nice car or a decent.
Okay, if you're doing budgeting.
Right.
Depending on the household budget.
Correct.
Got it. Thank you.
Yep.
Right, what's the philosophy for the pension drawdown?
In terms of the model, contributing?
Is it, does it come per department or is it overall arching plan for the entire?
It's related to the employees that probably has. Just a number, employees that. Plan. We get a number from MERS, which is our actuary model that we're expecting to pay, and then there's a. Two departments based on the. Five member plan employees that they have. So that's up, you know, you'll notice that's higher this year, Nathan and I were talking about what's. If you look at why general fund budget, for example, is a million dollars higher than here, last year rather. Kind of point to one thing, yeah. But that's a big piece of it. We were at fifty-nine percent last year. Finding percentage. Actuary. So. Moses is trying to back up over sixty percent.
And that's part of that plan to get us off the list, so to speak, for being under sixty percent.
Yeah, I mean, that's, MERS takes care of that, you know, they give us a number that is not to keep us in a good range.
Yeah, we. No, you're right, there's a, we actually pay the the highest rate they give us, there's a phase in and a non-phase in, we paid a toll. You could pay the lower one, but we we pay the highest one that they recommend.
Thank you. As we look to the future. Yeah, it's going to get worse before it gets better, even though we don't have anybody that we're adding to the Defiant Benefit Program. The worst thing of all is that they're all going to retire, the drawing that's and paying nothing.
Well, we've been paying an extra.
Not every, not every year.
Every year, but several.
We made those contributions and a couple of years back, you know, we've just talked about it, those like a black hole, we thought we could do better with our money than that can.
Well, you mentioned that Eagle requirements have increased for lab. Sample. Is that significant?
Yeah, it could be, I mean, every time we send out samples, it could be a couple hundred dollars, and if we're sending out three or four a week, you know, that adds up pretty quick. And it's sometimes it's things that we don't necessarily think we need a sample for, they think we should, you know, sinew bacteria, things like that.
Is that just us and you know, or is this overall?
Anybody that uses surface water is probably out to a little bit more, just because of the nature of the water, it's easier to treat groundwater than it is to treat.
And we have three or four working wells.
We have, we have three working wells and they're pumping right along, we're just waiting for that fourth one, and I know, I know we've had taste over issues probably starting in November, that's when we took the well down. And if that would have been running, we would not probably be talking about that. It's a whole lot easier to, we have found that the best way to treat that taste over issue is with the, it was, is with the groundwater from the wells. There are chemicals that we have at our disposal, we do use powder activated carbon, helps a little bit, not a lot. We have permanginate, helps a little bit, not a lot, I mean, the numbers that I quoted in that press release of twenty-five point eight, I think it was, that was in the drinking water. Right now, the the last sample we had from the lake, it was six hundred. So even if us removing ninety percent of it. That sixty is still too high, people are going to notice it.
Yeah.
You know, so. But if we had had that.
Certain people.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
I know this, my husband has no.
Yeah. I, I, I can smell it faintly, but I can't taste it. There's two different chemicals, one of them affects the smell and one of them affects the taste, and right now, the one that affects the smell is higher than the one that affects the taste. But we're working on it.
I like to think of it as the taste of the spring rain shower.
There you go. It's all the same thing. But what's your question, I mean, we we go above and beyond what we need to do, I mean, if we need to start taking more samples, taste odor once a month, we're doing it once a week now. Even if we need to or not, we do it.
That goes to the significance of trying to get more water.
Right.
Mm-hmm, even if we wanted to drill another well with.
So, so we, Tim and I recently met with our hydrogeologist and engineer, and we want him to approach Eagle with the pot and ask if we could drill a fifth well to have as a backup. Because it always seems like we have the problems with one of them's down for maintenance and we don't have that backup. So we're inquiring about that as well, and we've already got a site picked out for it and everything. Hopefully, we can get some good news from them, but again, that's a, that's a pretty significant.
Generally in the same field?
Yes. Yep. It'll be real, I mean, it has to be, typically it has to be two hundred feet away from borders and stuff like that, but we have a waiver out there, we only have to have a, but we've got a spot picked up.
We got the money and the budget to drill the new well.
Not right now, but I mean, if we wanted to, we have, we have fund balance that we can do that. You know, everybody talks about RO this and RO that, nobody's ever told me that RO is going to a hundred percent remove this stuff. And if it doesn't, I would never recommend doing it, because again, if it only removed ninety percent. You're still going to have problems. And it and it might, it might remove a hundred percent, but nobody's ever told me that. Tim and I talk daily about this, so.
So this, these are the rates for residential?
Average, I use seven units as an average units, that's about five thousand gallons a month. And that's what industry standard is, they use five thousand gallons a month, some sometimes they use six thousand gallons, so I chose seven units.
And so we have the hospital on our system.
Everybody will go up proportionally, correct? And they pay one point two five times what we pay.
And different communities pay different overages.
So for us.
The place. They and he die. Then we let him get.
Yes, they pay thirty percent more.
Thirty.
Yep.
Remember what.
Yep.
Double. Oh. We'll tell you later.
I'm in the wrong scene.
They're our biggest user as well, so if that was ever to leave our system. Guess what, everybody's going to have to pick it up.
Well, maybe we won't have.
Possibly. Possibly. Madison Township's double rate, Adrian Township's one point three and not tax exempt, I think, whatever the language went to bind, so like the hospital, LASB is.
On schedule.
Wow, look at that.
That's so far.
The fun's about.
You don't want to see the fun.
The fun's over, come on.
All right, good evening. Just one thing?
Yes. You said keep it simple.
Well, I commend you for that.
I will be seeing Kelly. I will be seeing Kelly. Later this week, so. If anyone else has got handouts.
Alright, okay, um, so. As you'll see, it's a, a little bit simpler than years past, um, which is, is a good thing because we've done a lot of good in the last couple of years. Uh, one of them being uh your, your willingness to add a firefighter paramedic position last year, uh, that has helped tremendously. Um, with. Trying to uh uh staff the, the equipment that we do have. So I wanna thank you for that.
One per shift.
One per shift, correct, yes. Um, I, I.
Weird herbs.
Right, right. So yes, so that has been very, very well uh received and, and working very well, so. Um, so on the budget side for this year, uh, this coming year, we requested uh twenty-five thousand dollars to. Mount tools and equipment. The, the, uh, our new engine that we ordered. About a year and a half ago. Hopefully will be in this fall, so. Uh, expected this fall sometime. The money's already put away for that, so uh we're just looking for twenty-five thousand dollars to buy some loose equipment. Some holes we may have to replace. Uh, that sort of thing that we'll need for that. So that's our big capital item for this year. In addition to that, for the future, uh, for future budgets. So our ambulance service has been. Doing very good things, but very, very busy. So as you know, that was one of the reasons that you allowed us to add more, more personnel last year. Uh, well, I guess this budget year, but uh it also puts a heavy wear on the ambulances themselves. So. They, the, our oldest ambulance, if you remember last budget year when we had this meeting, got a new engine, a new motor put into it. This budget year, we have one out of service that has about ninety, over ninety thousand miles on it. It is six years old this year. And uh, we actually. Dropped a fuel pump out of it, high pressure fuel pump, transporting a patient emergently to Toledo, um, and it literally just died on them. So. That one's out of service, getting repaired. Uh, so we do need to keep up with the. The, the replacements on the, the ambulances. Keep those in service. Our, our next, or I guess our newest ambulance is about three years old and that one's doing okay so far. About three years old, but it's got over sixty thousand miles on it. So. Uh, we're definitely getting our use out of them. Our, our goal is once we switch all of our ambulances over to. Um, to ones that have all aluminum boxes on them and um. We wanna rechassis them. So basically, they just unbolted the box on the back, the ambulance part. And buy a new chassis from the, from Ford, Chevy, whoever, and just bolt it onto a new. So eventually, it'll be a cost savings, but we have to get them replaced and to that level. Our oldest ambulance we have currently is not uh. Is not built that way. The, the, the box is aluminum. But everything inside, all the cabinets, everything is, is like pressed board with, with laminate over it. So bouncing down the roads, it, it. It's not gonna last to remount it. Where the newer ones are all, all the compartments, all the, the uh spaces are all aluminum. So. Uh, that's why we spend extra money on the front end, hoping that we can uh, we can save that money in the future. So. Uh, last I heard, this was years ago, but last I heard. New Orleans Fire Department had one, they re-chassis sixteen times. Because. The, the box doesn't go bad. You just pick it up with a new chassis. So. That's what we're looking at. Um, so we're looking at uh programming and then a, a new ambulance into the budget for fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six uh from the fund balance. And that would be uh, so if we ordered it today, it would be two to three years before we saw it. Uh, that's the nature of ambulances and fire trucks right now, just like the, the engine we're waiting on. Figuring on two years, ambulances, if we order one today, it'd be three years. So.
Is this a replacement? So for one you've got?
So. Our goal is to have it be a replacement. But because we go through them so often, like right now, we're down to two ambulances.
How many do you usually have, three?
So we have three total. One's out, so we have to pull one in. And we can staff three ambulances most days, not every day, but most days. We could staff three if we had three. So we may look at our oldest one, just putting that into a reserve that if we have to use it. We're gonna have to see in two to three years if, if it even can be. Except that's the one we already put a new motor in. That one is, that one was our only ambulance for. Seven years, eight years, so that got all the use. So I can't tell you if that one, uh, you know, worked.
So you would have. You hope to have. I understand. Three in service and one in reserve.
Right.
The additional one on the, the fourth line.
Yep.
Is that one more?
So that would replace, so we'd never go more than four.
Okay.
Uh, and I say never, but I didn't think we'd need four when we.
Wow, could you, would you have, you know, would you have the, the paramedics to staff?
Right, right. Yeah, I mean, that, uh, you know, I did not think we'd be at fifty-three hundred calls a year. Uh, but. We are. So, uh, yeah, so my, my goal would be four maximum, uh, at least three, never go less than three. Um, but four, having that backup possibly if, if we can. So. Um. The, any questions on the ambulance and the need for that? Uh, the, the good news is, I guess, is uh. This year, we were over, what, one point three million? Bring in for ambulance income, I think we're like one point three three. Uh, so. That's, what's that?
Above costs.
So that's income.
Okay.
Right. Costs are hard because it costs us two million dollars for the one point nine million for the fire department even before we had an ambulance. So it's. Like, we're already paying those people. So just flat income brought in is one point three million. We figured when we first started, seven hundred fifty thousand was, was our gas and our goal, and we're running way more calls than, of course, that was pre-COVID. That was. Pre a lot of things. So. Um, we're running a lot more calls, but we are bringing in some income to support that, so. Questions on that? Alright, um, I added station remodeling there and this has come about really not even since, uh, this is just a future thing that, that we're looking at. Um, and we didn't really come across it until um this last. January, um, so two months ago, when we had. Uh, we actually had one firefighter opening and we had. More, we interviewed more females than we did males. My understanding is first time ever. Uh, we currently have three female firefighters on shift. Uh, and we have three more on our paid-on call who have also applied for full-time. Uh, so. Uh, it's not anything we've ever dealt with before. We've had firefighters, uh, female firefighters in the past, but uh, no more than two at once. And when the building was built in nineteen eighty-seven. It wasn't really built for multiple. It, there's lockers for two females. So, uh, in the locker room, the locker room has a shower and, and it's. It's not big enough to put any more lockers. We actually put a third locker in there for now. But we're like, okay, now what? Now we have, we have three firefighters, they're female, and we have very distinct possibility. We could have more. What do we do about this to, to give them what they, what they should have? Uh. So that, like I said, all kind of came about. We hired uh two females in July and one just in January, February. And it's like, oh. And we have a lot more that have applied. Uh.
When you say remodel, you mean addition?
I, I don't know. So I've actually contacted an architect who uh is supposed to come in and just do a walkthrough and just. We have no idea. Like, we're, we're kinda just, what do you think we should do type of thing? So.
Like where they, they sleep and stuff. Are you looking at even separating that possibly out with the?
So it's separated with, it's separated with um. Not actual doors, but um.
It was like curtains or?
Yeah, so it's got like curtains, but what am I trying to say? Like dividers?
Dividers, room dividers.
Yep. So, and we only did that. Two years ago, two, maybe three years ago. Um, just anticipation that there were a lot of, you know. We, the last female firefighter we had was probably. Fourteen, fifteen years ago, right? And. Just nobody thought about it. We just had an open bunk room and so about two years ago, we're thinking, hey, you know what? We should probably start. Looking towards the future. Uh, interestingly enough. Uh, my niece is in high school. She's senior in high school. She's going through a firefighter academy in high school and there's. One male and five females in the class. So it's like, hey, this, this is the future. What, we need to start planning for it. So just wanted to put that on your radar. I have no idea what it looks like. But we started looking going.
I'd be curious to find out what uh. State or federal guidelines that would require us to separate them. Um, I just know some other programs like medical residency programs do not separate. Male and female. They're all in one room in some instances. So are we required to have separate uh areas?
I'm not an attorney at all, uh, so I, I don't know, but I, I can tell you. That uh, we actually hired a, a female who is from Texas. She worked for the Houston Fire Department for a couple of years before she moved back to Michigan. And she was overjoyed at what we had, cause she said, like, half the Houston fighter stations don't have any female.
Right.
Uh, you know, uh, anything separate for that. So, uh, but it's, it's really difficult when we don't have a locker room or, or we don't have, right now, we have enough with three lockers. But there's nowhere to put a fourth. There's no, you know, so. I don't know. But we're, we're just at the very infancy stage of, hey. What, what would this look like? Is it possible in the building we have? You know, addition or, we, we don't know. So.
You're talking about attracting and repeating uh your female firefighters, that, that could be a good area.
Right. Yep. Yeah, like I said, we, I, I think for maybe like four months. In the, in the past, had two female firefighters, like, well, twenty-three years ago. Uh, right as I was starting. And other than that, we've not, we never had more than one until. This last July. So at, at the same time, so. Yeah, so it's just, it's something we're looking at and trying to explore and figure out what it actually would look like. So just wanted to get it on your radar. Um, the, our tower, our aerial ladder, that ninety-five foot ladder that goes up in the air with a bucket on the end, uh, that. We're looking at refurbishing it. Uh, three hundred thousand dollars is what we're figuring to refurbish it. To replace that truck, it, it'll be twenty-five years old uh in twenty-twenty-five. And to replace that truck, you're looking, probably in twenty-twenty-five, you're looking really close to two million dollars. So. We, we feel we can get it refurbished. Talking to a lot of. A lot of the, the people that work on the trucks, they said they would refurbish our truck every day, all day. The, the computers on the new ones. Are, doesn't matter what they do, they have issues. Doesn't matter what manufacturer it is, there's, you know, there's issues with computers where ours has little. Uh, little bit of computers, but not to the extent that all the new ones do. And they would love to have our truck, but we wanna keep it, so we're not gonna give it to them. Um. So a lot cheaper and it will, will continue to serve hopefully. Uh, but even, even if putting three hundred thousand dollars in it, that's still less than a million dollars, including what we paid for. Cause we paid six hundred and fifty thousand. Uh, it back in two thousand. So. Looking to, looking that direction, uh, but just get that on your radar. And then, but on there, uh, another new ambulance. Cause like I said, even if we order one today, two to three years down the road, two to three years down the road. We're, we're definitely gonna be needing to order another one. Hopefully, they're not quite two to three years out by then, but we don't know. Any questions on capital items? Uh, the general fund pretty much stays the same. Uh, no big changes except the. EMS grant we got. So we got two hundred fifty-nine thousand dollar grant to. Put up to ten of our employees in through paramedic school. Which it's about close to ten thousand dollars per person, plus it pays. Um, fifteen dollars, up to fifteen dollars per hour for them while they're in class, uh, which has been a. Pretty much first time ever. Trying to get more paramedics in the state. It's a state grant that's, what did you call it? Pass-through money from the federal government? Um, so we apply and do all the paperwork through the state, but it's actual federal money. Trying to get more paramedics because there's a huge shortage. So. State figured if we can pay for class, pay for their, uh, pay for some wages, then, and it's. Uh, right now, we have eight paramedics in class. So it's uh, it's. Very good for us because we had five that we would have to put through. On, on the city's budget. So it's helping out a lot. So that, the overtime, the auxiliary and the training budget increases reflect that. But that's all money that comes from the. Federal government from the state.
No, we can't get that one back.
For example, we trained them, they went, they worked for a year and then left.
Correct.
We did not collect any.
Correct. Nope. It's, it's federal money, so if they leave, yeah, it's not technically our money, but. You think, even if we paid for it. And they left in a year, we, yeah, so.
You could kind of have those bought back agreements and shut those levels down, but you know, the reality of it is. Take your blood out of the truck.
Yeah, so it's much better for. The, the federal government and the state to pay for it. Cause then, you know, I mean, if, if they do go somewhere, if they do, it's not that money that we expect. That's all I have unless you have questions.
I've questioned on the revenue side.
Okay.
Looking at fire inspection fees, budgeted at one fifty. Through six months, you got eighteen thousand. If you duplicate it, you're gonna come up a hundred and seventy thousand dollars short.
Right.
Going on there.
So some of that is not collected possibly. We're actually looking into that. Some of it's not collected possibly. Some of it is um. Was collected and we're not sure if it was recorded in the right place, but it's still nowhere near. Um, where, where we would be. So what we did when we started that program is. Said, okay, how much does this program cost to run? Uh, and then we came up with them. That was the hundred fifty dollar.
Yeah.
Yep. And then. We came to you, uh, to the commission with a fee schedule. And the fee schedule was, it depends on the square footage, but anywhere from a hundred dollars to a thousand dollars per inspection per year. Uh, so that's what it's actually bringing in by doing inspections at a hundred dollars. When I first came up with the, with the uh fee schedule. The, the minimum amount was two fifty because I didn't figure we'd be able to make that hundred and fifty if it wasn't. So that's where the, the discrepancy is. I'm gonna say most, a, a large percentage of the businesses, because of their square footage, are the hundred dollar fees. Do it takes a long time to get up to that hundred fifty thousand when you're only. Doing a hundred, hundred dollars at a time. So that's, the, the fee schedule is, of course, completely up to you. Um, what you wanna charge for that.
So once we analyze. But what needs to be collected, we, I think are going to uh. Uh, pay first, schedule later, protocol going forward, which is the, of the collection that if you. Final housing, we don't, we don't get an inspection day, so if you don't schedule and you get a ticket and stuff. So we've gotta go with that kind of program, make sure we're collecting them. So we've gotta go with that kind of program, make sure we're collecting them, but if it's still not in line, then we're gonna have to adjust fees. Yeah, I mean, we said we expected a hundred and fifty in revenue to pay for the program, it's a program, it's supposed to pay for itself. Why we budgeted the same number.
And we're not trying to make money on inspections, but we need to at least break even, and it doesn't look like that we're doing that right now, and I understand. If we're doing the inspection and then collecting later and people aren't gonna pay, that they don't like the inspection in the first place, that, you know, that. Is a problem, but so, yeah, I guess getting getting the payment in advance will help that, I just don't wanna see it's a little bit, that's all.
You gotta pay close attention to fees, and that's a theme going forward for every department. Close attention to your fees, you're probably gonna have decent fee adjustments.
Well, and that's what, uh you know, Will brought in, the adjustments, you know, I I don't like raising fees. I don't think any of us do, but we can't lose money. It's not our money, it's.
Well, and this is a service, and that's the theory being. The service that you're receiving and other people, the taxpayers generally should not pay for that service, the ones who don't pay for the service should pay.
Thank you for that explanation.
I wanna hear Will answer my question. Answering his. So we have, uh let's see, twenty-four firefighters and then the inspector and then a office assistant. And me, correct.
Now, do we wanna break or do we wanna keep going?
All right.
All right.
All right, good evening.
Good evening.
Bye as much, much shorter. Our budget is largely unchanged.
Color, I mean color too, yes.
So our budget is largely unchanged. From last year, the six areas that I had highlighted here, um. State has opted to give us a little bit more in our three oh two funding, so instead of. Fifty dollars an officer, we're getting eighty dollars an officer to train this year, isn't that uh very generous, right, we can buy a lot of training with eighty dollars per officer. So um they have been very generous, the second night item, five four three cadet assistance program. So recognizing that it's very difficult to find and hire police officers, they will. Uh reimburse us for those that we sent to the police academy, so if we can find someone and send them, uh they will reimburse us the cost of that, so that amount seventy-two, that is. Uh three cadets to go through the police academy, the same number we tried to send last year, um. We had hoped to have people selected and sent to the May class. And we have not been able to find anyone yet, so we're uh we're gonna be looking for the Ju- June or July classes, depending on which academy we use. But hopefully we can find those people. Um there's a significant increase in overtime, part of that is our turnover, we have seven retirements that are happening this year. So as those people go out and we're back filling those spots, um that's gonna be, yeah, that that'll be a scheduling difficulty, but we'll work our way through that. Also, we have um included a number of focused park patrols, we started doing that last year, it was very effective. Uh we wanna continue that this year, so we we uh partner up two officers and send them down the trail and through the parks uh to address any issues that we have there. Contract services I put on here, it's uh there's not much of a change, it's uh basically our flock subscription cost. But as you know, we're having a little difficulty getting that process off the ground, so flock had promised us that they would. Be able to work with M dot and get our cameras up without much hassle, and now we're going on almost a year and we still only have uh two out of ten. Up and and running right now, so the last uh conversation I had with them last week, they are anticipating. Getting the rest of those out and up, and then they wanna talk about what type of concession they'll give us for the next year, so they're gonna. Pro rate how many cameras we've had over the last year as opposed to what we've been paying for, and then they're gonna discount us going forward on whatever that amount is.
Is that unique to the location or is that then a train across?
Um I don't think I can answer that, I I think. Uh the issue that that we're having is mainly those on two twenty-three, the locations there, they they have real issue with us uh rectifying spots, put those, but. Um I know other places that have had difficulties, but if uh if flock. You know, as part of their pitch was that, oh yeah, we work with M dot all the time. And when we met last week, yes, we're we're streamlining those processes, you know, et cetera, so I don't know, I don't know if that's uh. True or not, but I guess we'll find out pretty soon. Uh the.
So so we like a division in two twenty-three coming and saying you can't have a flock.
Well, they're they're very specific on where they can go, so so any existing signs, they don't wanna obscure, they don't want it to be uh vision obstruction when pulling out of an intersection, so. Uh for example, that.
They're just not state highways though, or state streets?
No, state highways, city city streets, so we have the one on the roundabout, and there's no no issues with that one. Um the the one at uh out by Walmart has been up a couple of times and taken down a couple of times, so. When it's there, it's great, we we've solved a couple of things based off of the information that it provides, but it's never been there for very long, so we're still.
Who's taking it down?
M dot.
So what if we put it further down division?
Well, this this shouldn't be like a mystery, right, the right away permitting process is you draw a plan, you show where you're. Reposing, put it, put it there, you got, get a permit, you put it there, and then it stays. Right, but somehow flock is not following that process that we're seeing in May. Putting it elsewhere besides where it was permitted to be, or putting it there without.
The uh the discrepancy is, I was told, is essentially they're putting it in a place, it's gotta be behind a guardrail, X number of feet. M dot goes out, does their measurements, it's not where that's supposed to be, so um hoping hoping we can get that figured out relatively quickly. So the uh the training amount is increased um because of that uh cadet assistance program, so the amount we normally put in for training. We're increasing to to uh offset that so that we can pay ahead and then get reimbursed by the state, so that is the difference there. Um capital equipment, we are only asking for one vehicle this year, we. We're pretty good on mileage, so our replacement schedule, we're not as uh strapped as we normally are, so we can can cut down to one on that. That's the difference there.
Don't be worried with seven retirements, but yet you don't even have cadets in the training?
So we uh we did hire a head, um mayor, if you remember last year, I think we. We had extra people in the class and we were trying to get people trained up and uh. And some of that we were able to do, and then some people weren't able to make it through, so. We're in a better spot than we would have been normally, but not as good as I would have hoped, I guess is the way to describe that, I was hoping that we would be at thirty-three spawn right now. It has been very difficult.
Actively hiring in the replacement process for those seven, or when do those retirements become?
So uh because it takes so long to train somebody to get them up, we're trying to get them ready to go, so that when that person, you know. Left, we would just drop down through attrition and we we have that mostly, but um. As as they start, so our first retirement here is gonna be in April, and then it's just about every month after that, so we were. We were hoping to have more people trained and ready to go, but we don't.
Is the thirty-three what you wanted total after those returns or before leaving?
We wanted before and then kind of a a replace as we go, but um you know, we're gonna, we're gonna dip down and come back is is what we were hoping to do, but. Hasn't worked that way for us so far.
Now, what is the ratio, what's the ratio supposed to be for officers for the population? We've talked about it in the past, like one per two thousand, what what's the number? Cause I thought I thought the number was supposed to be to be just at standard, we were supposed to have forty.
Right, it's like, it's a two for every thousand, is that?
Two for every.
Trying to remember now.
I'm not sure, but I remember the forty is what, and now it's just shooting for thirty-three, cause it's impossible to get the forty, is that?
It it seems that way lately, but.
Well, and the reason I ask is, you know, law enforcement is on the top of everybody's list, you know, there's. You know, so I I, you know, should we staff to what the level that we should, you know, that we're expected to?
Right, and we've uh we've kind of changed with the time, so our our call volume has decreased dramatically. But the intensity of the things that we are going to has increased, so we have, we pivoted more from patrol into investigation, so we will get. Twenty referrals from Child Protective Services in a week. So instead of those going to a patrol officer on the road, they're going to a investigator in the office, so then they're going out to the calls with the people. Um you know, it's it's more um felony type offenses than than anything, so. We're we're kind of changing the way we are staffed right now, but everybody starts on the road and that's where our backbone still is, but. You know, instead of doing twenty thousand calls a year, we're doing fourteen, thirteen, fourteen thousand.
Is it the, is it the wages, I know like at one point we weren't super competitive and we were losing people for that reason? Or is it just cause there's not as many people going into law enforcement, um you know, what, do you have a reasoning for it?
Um wages is not not an issue, no, we uh when uh when we restructured a couple of years ago, that really set it for us, so now. Essentially, what happens is is whoever is in a contract year, you know, between us and the county and to come see, you know, it's. It's whoever settles is on top for that year, so we're very competitive as far as that goes, and I don't hear um. I don't hear too many rumblings about that anymore, uh essentially, there's just no one out there going into law enforcement. So it's, it can be very difficult, even when I'm, you know, when I'm going into college classes and I'm telling people, hey, you can you can. Come right now and and go to the police academy and uh, you know, it's not, it's not working out like that.
Any advantage in terms of uh metro parks, so they have non-certified officers patrolling parks? Um reducing your costs there?
I'm I'm not sure we've really explored that, that would be one we'd have to take up with the union as far as non-certified people, but um I guess that would be. Uh we we use reserves to some extent, in the same way, they don't have rest powers, um but we partner them with a certified officer, so I suppose that would be something we could explore, but.
We did talk about park rangers, something about, yeah, respecting the park safety that we had. And the conclusion we came to was, they're not respecting sworn officers. All that's gonna happen, park ranger rolls off, they're gonna.
We did have uh security in the parks, uh but that might have been before Jeremiah's time, but I remember uh Randy Tripp was out there and we had a couple others and. And it was just that, it was, you know, nobody gave them any respect at all, so he would approach whatever the problem is and. It didn't usually go well, wound up calling us to respond anyways.
Old person that had a schedule.
I did bring cookies in, so if you guys were involved, so they're ready.
I'm doing well.
But we have our.
Trainer, you know, for things that might come up.
Right, you know, for eight hours or whatever, okay, I'll be sure, thank you. Obviously, I didn't ask you. And we wanted to stay that way close to the the arena. Hundred and eighty-eight thousand points, and I got I got four nights, it's down down, but. Yeah, I mean, otherwise that is surprised.
Yeah. That's why I was like, oh, we're these these house.
Why is he?
Yeah, no, yeah. Oh, yeah. I knew, I'm, I'm already reading that five when I first met his name, that's why I wondered if they were thinking about. Since April. That's the one, yeah, I asked, one of the ones I asked about, yeah. Yeah, that's the one I got. I wonder if that is the really.
Oh, yeah. We said, yeah, well, that would be good, we'd never all be here at the very least.
You actually have a budget.
Yeah. I know, that's what I'm saying.
We got.
I know.
There's a city in hurting budget where we put.
I tell you, it's not here, so I'm taking.
Oh, you're. Sorry. At least you'll be all right.
Yeah. Yeah, and I parked your car for you.
I want to throw that with stuff.
Are we ready now?
Ready to go? Alright.
Oh, wait, Gordon's on here. I swore I saw him sometime. I saw him sit there, but he's gone. Sorry. It goes to. Yep, thank you. I watched him go up and turn it down and I was like.
I was getting drawn.
Oh, we can start now?
Alright, I guess we can resume now.
Sorry, Gordon, I thought you were there.
I had a couple of steps on my way. Alright, next up, parks and recreation.
Mr. Davis. Alright, thanks Greg, Mayor, Michigan, evening, um. Funny, I got a little packet here. I did my best to shorten it down. Took a lot to get there, uh, starting out, uh, really. One of them kind of excited about is really taking out capital projects, uh, equipment. My budget's pretty much unchanged, um, from last year, there's obviously a few fixed costs and things of that nature. Uh, that have sunk up a, a, a minute amount in some areas, um. But to give you kind of a snapshot for the actual parks and forestry part of us, um, estimated revenue this year of about seventy-eight thousand. Um, there's our expenditures, that expenditure is up twenty-nine thousand from last year, uh, but that is strictly coming down to. Uh, fixed costs in regards for building allocation fund, um. We had some money added to that, looking at future renovations. Um, a little bit of the parts and portion department, uh, besides myself and my office manager Sydney, there's twelve of us. Um, in the department year round, um, in the summer. We're anywhere from fourteen to sixteen seasonal employees, um, and that's for that very intense time roughly from April, uh, through the fall. You see, I put September on there, a lot of our seasonal employees are college students, high school seniors, and they're usually gone by the end of August, we do have a few. That hang around to help us get through the fall and work towards, uh, Comstock and the Christmas and things of that nature, but they're, again, they're gone. Roughly mid-November, um, in our department this year, um. There are a little bit of ARPA funds left over, and these are some of the projects that are gonna be done here, uh, by the summer, um, ten thousand bathroom upgrades. Uh, we're actually in the process of overhauling the Tressel Park bathrooms right now. So we're working on that. Uh, ten thousand roof repair, that's going to the Riverside Shed, um, that's where we house, uh, a lot of equipment. Um, in that sector, so that's getting worked on, uh, we're doing some lighting upgrades, uh, in some of the parks. Uh, I'm excited about, we're overhauling and redoing the Riverside, uh, basketball court and hoops, um. Doing the exact same thing that we did at Parish Park, really putting in. Right, you can throw away, if you go down to Riverside Park, usually those rims are double, double rims, right, those are terrible for playing, and I get why they're there, um. But one of the exciting things about the, the, the glass backboards that we put in at Parish Park, that's an upgrade, like that's an investment and the neighborhood absolutely loves it. So we're literally doing the identical thing, uh, down at Riverside, so we're already got the hoops ordered, and soon as the weather breaks, um, that court will be overhauled and done. Um, fourteen thousand, one fifty-three new playground surfacing, we've actually already been doing that the past week, um. Adding new impact surfacing to all the parks and cleaning up benches, um, some trash bins, some extra things, uh, adding those, uh, to our parks. In regards to capital equipment, uh, we have ten thousand for miscellaneous small equipment, um. We need a new trailer, um, the axle's broke, so we're gonna be purchasing a new trailer, um, that's also against a handful of, uh, chainsaws. Um, weed whips, things of that nature that are used, you know, pretty hard and we go through those quite a bit, so. Pretty fortunate that there was a little bit of ARPA funds left over, which will be taken up, uh, the capital stuff for the Parks Department, um. In regards to recreation, just breaking it down to the Recreation Department, um, you see the estimated revenue, that's mainly, um, dealing with, with Bone Pool and the School District. Um, in regards to Bone Pool, give you a snapshot, twenty-eight seasonal employees, so that includes all lifeguards, the managers down there and the desk help. Um, so we, we're lucky, we've been on top of that, we've already. Got most of them hired and ready to come back, so we're, we're gearing up for an exciting, exciting year at Bone Pool. Um, if you remember last year, discussion of the overhaul of Bone Pool, we talked about taking a phased approach and doing this. Um, phase one is, is in progress and we're, we're full speed ahead. The boiler just arrived the other day, um, they played a joke on me and said that they weren't gonna go to get it till August, so. I was having a meltdown last week, uh, went, kicked Greg's door open and said, what do I do, and then it turns out. For four days hours, they had me on the hook, so, um. So we're on pace, all that's good to go.
Uh, what's the, um, schedule for pool opening?
I know you. Apparently Monday, June third. June third. And the reason that being with that date is the high school, Adrian and a few other, where the majority of our employees come from. Finish Friday, May thirty-first, so we're giving them a couple of days for us to kind of get together. And then kick open, um, pool in the season on Monday, June third, so. As long as there's no more freak snowstorms and they somehow get extended, we should be good to go, um, for that, so I'm keeping the pressure on, uh. Superintendent Parker there to make sure he gets those kids out on the thirty-first.
When do you open, uh, turn on the water at the splashdown?
Um, it'll be mid-May, once we know we're in the clear in regards to overnight, uh, temperatures dropping, um. Last year we opened it right up before Memorial Day. And that's super easy, that's about an hour turn on, so, um, if we're seeing these. Crazy temperatures, obviously, you know, barring today, you know, we could open it, so just all weather dependent, but that's, that's a easy turn on. Continuing that, uh, cemetery, also kind of follow up on my preview, um. It's kind of pretty straightforward, that's our estimated revenue, that forty-seven thousand, that simply comes from burials and things of that nature, people buying lots, um. Danny currently has sixteen employees and that's, that's pretty fixed within me as a. A loyal dedicated crew and they work from April first through November, so they are busy that entire time. Um, in regards to some capital projects, uh. Fortunately, again, we have a little bit of ARPA money left over, um, Danny's working on some burial upgrades, he's looking at a cremation garden, um, kind of going green for a few, um. Uh, different ideas and also just looking at kind of some of the trends in that industry and Danny's pretty on top of that, so. We're gonna be using that, um, and then also thirteen thousand five hundred. Obviously, you can imagine those mowers run five days a week, minimum eight hours a day, so Danny is getting a new mower, um, this year and he's actually bidding that out right now.
I had a citizen ask me a question about the cemetery on a previous capital project. Are the restrooms out there ADA compliant?
Honestly, I'm, I'm stopped by, don't know. I'm not sure. Yeah, absolutely, thank you. Alright, moving on to page two. Our beloved fee estates. Uh, this year, we recently met with Arvin Trust who oversees the fee estate for us and. Our projected payout for this year is anywhere from one point one to one point two million dollars. That's all market dependent, that's kind of a hard number to really s- bring accurately from a day-to-day basis, but that is our best estimate. Um, estimated expenditures, we have one point four eight four, uh, but you see that very next line, we see revised, and really what that was is obviously this budget process. This allows for myself and my staff to have continual conversations, continual inventory of where we're at with, um. Different projects and also materials and equipment, and as we were doing this, we started to. Look at things and some, some leads change and in regards, so. We actually, we highlighted them down below, we're actually taking off, um, a couple of, uh, pieces of equipment. We think we can get okay, we, we can do okay without them, um, but we're also very cognizant of that number and not wanting to. Obviously just blow through the fee estate money, right, we try to be good stewards of that, so we're actually taking off, um. A hydro dump trailer, um, a thirty-five thousand dollar wood chipper and a bat wing mower. You can see why we have in there, whatever, that kind of the reasonings, what we would need those for, um. Back up to the top though, the fee estate balance as of two twenty-nine of this year. It's at twenty-three million dollars, it's a little over twenty-three and a half, um. We have, as of today, seven hundred and twenty-two thousand, six hundred and seventy-five access accounts. Um, that's always a question that gets, that comes up and people ask. What that is, so. I've explained this before, on July first, I just don't get, get a check for one million dollars, right? Quarterly Nathan, we submit our expenditures that are fee estate related, we give those to Nathan and Nathan does and submits those, um. There's also scenarios where projects that we estimate come in under. Right, again, we're not just spending the money just to spend it, we're trying to be very good stewards with that money. And so there's times where a project, we estimate fifty thousand dollars. Our luck it comes back at thirty thousand, or not thirty, they're probably forty, right, we're never really that far off. But anytime many of those funds that aren't used for whatever reason, those go over and those also, you know, protect us and help us in regards to, you know, if the market crashes. And our estimated payout is gonna be terribly low, but we know essentially our fixed costs and operating are gonna take us over that. We have the money in that excess account there, so again, while that is a nice big number there, that is kind of that, that rainy day, um. One thing I learned when I started and looking back to the history of how the money was paid. There was large amounts in the excess funds before, but that's how they paid for the wall down at Comstock Park. So that was a huge, um, capital expenditure that was there, and that's where that, uh, that's how that, uh, project was built for. So, but in regards to capital projects, uh, that are fee state qualified, um, you can see right there, fifty thousand to the KRTA for the trail. Seventeen thousand, that goes toward our city flowers, you know, the beautification of downtown and our parks that you see. Um, so that's how we pay for that, it's also tree planting throughout the city, we get, uh, requests all the time from residents wanting. Uh, new trees put in the boulevard and different places like that, so that's how we. We pay for that, uh, forty-five thousand asphalt maintenance, we have a ton of, um, asphalt maintenance that needs to be done this year, so we'll continue to do that, um. Thirty thousand, the Tressel Park, uh, restoration, like I told you before, we, you approved a, a larger amount last year. And so this year, uh, by the end of the summer, by, um, hopefully our Shakespeare of the Park event that occurs. Uh, Tressel Park will be completely done and overhaul is gonna look brand new, so we're really excited about that. In regards to capital equipment, you see the total there sixty-eight thousand, again miscellaneous small equipment. We use, um, whether it be ARPA funds or even fee estate, that's for constant, just small pieces of equipment that we constantly need to repair. Or replace every year and doing our duty, um, twelve thousand will get us a new utility cart, which the new water tank and pump. That's how we water everything downtown and throughout the parks, so those two go hand in hand. Um, we're taking off, as I stated, the, the dump trailer, the wood chipper. And we're also looking at a new small Ford Ranger, and that is to get on the trail, the trail, it's ten miles out, ten miles in. We have bigger trucks, it's hard to get down, up and down there in a safe manner, crossing the bridges, this allows us to be very quickly getting. A, a dedicated vehicle up and down the trail that's small and safe, um. For any, 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 uh, issues over the weekend, there was a large tree that went down over the trail. So we have to navigate, how do we get a large truck down to those areas, so. That's what we're looking at in regards to capital equipment. And at the bottom there, it's just a total summary, again, of all the different, uh. ARPA projects and equipment that we are currently working on or will be completed this summer, so that's kind of a snapshot. And I'll open it up to questions.
Great, zero. Um, a deadline for spending ARPA funds?
There is, uh, a deadline for committing them and a deadline for spending them.
Uh, December of twenty-six.
Oh, we got.
December twenty-fourth.
Oh, by the end of the year.
Yeah. Most of it, it is all committed down.
I, I also heard the concern about, um.
Yeah, he just kept asking.
Yeah, yeah.
The, the other issue Gordon and I heard about, uh, last week or the week before, related to, um, asphalt path, um, from parking lots. Um, to the dog park. Is that part of the asphalt projects or is that on your radar or not, just the concern of, um, getting from the car to the dog park?
Just for the disabled people to get down to the ramp and work their way around, so they were asking about, at the parking lot on the island. If there was a way on that flat surface. To pave it or put a sidewalk of some kind.
You give me the money, I can do that, that's, that would be, that would be, that's, that's a big distance and I have absolutely no, that, and I don't disagree. But that, that's seriously expensive, so yeah, I mean, and, and I don't disagree, that is like quite a steep hill there, um. And, and so I can absolutely.
Well, if you're in a wheelchair, that come down really fast, but going back.
Pulling up each other. And if it's steep, then, you know, it's not just paving it, but. Cause there's maximum rise and run, uh, uh, designing it. I think it's twelve percent.
Not how much of a rise there is from that.
Yeah, I don't think there's there, they're trying to take it out, like come across from the, that works more flat.
So, yeah, that looks simple, I, I could get a boat and bring it back to you all, um, for your. That's, that's simple.
So this is the last of your ARPA funds?
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, just generally, we scour every, uh, nook and cranny for other ways to pay for capital items, let's see it. You know, we're fortunate, uh. I took over when they converted, we had a window that was off, capital fundings. We also, you know, that, um. We have backlog, so. We're fortunate with the various COVID programs that were in the, the storm that. Those funds are running out now. Other ways to pay for the capital items, you know. Of operations.
This. No, I was just gonna ask about the, about the balances and the oil trust funds.
William Pi?
No, oil trust?
Yeah.
Four point.
Well, four, yeah, four point, four point four. It throws up. Hundred and fifty, here?
It's a, uh, it's another sixteen quarter rolling average, yeah, about.
We haven't used it since the east side. We haven't used it since the east side railings section.
In there, yeah.
We have a outstanding question to the trustee of the whether it accrues like the fee estate does. The estate, um. Um, distributed but unused. Miles accrue and fund out. It's unclear whether the oil trust does that. If I use that hundred fifty a year. I haven't, I don't see anything in the. Formation documents that suggest. That it wouldn't accrue, but we have. Take the trustee.
So we can.
But we could have six hundred thousand that would be available for a recreation project.
Yeah, if they would let us save essentially for a larger funded project.
Now, that's that we do hope to continue the trail. Um, to unlock. Jeremiah, I can't read those, uh, let's say.
Uh, so you it's in your consent to jump site approval, um. And then that's going to be a pretty quick turn. We anticipate those being up hopefully by June, July.
Remind me, did we find a a new distributor or a new, um, contractor to give us the. Planks for the. Bridges on the park.
Yes, we worked with, um.
I noticed there were, when I was walking this weekend, several had been replaced recently, looked different.
Correct, that's just they're they're brand new. That's that's, you know, essentially into it. Um, again, if you remember. So it's concrete. Right?
It's not concrete, they're wood, but they're that they're they don't look like.
Those does that's just, it's, if you remember last year, we discussed and some of the things, those are especially cut, especially thickness, terribly expensive. Um, we had trouble finding those and so we were working with Kriegoff with some of their. Um, lumber distribute distribution, uh, companies and we were able to to get with one that actually had. Um, pieces that were cut to the exact, uh, measurements that we have down on those planks and stuff. So we have a brand new stack that was just delivered. Probably six weeks ago, so we can start to put those in in those places. That's the long board luxury. I'm assuming you're talking about some of the stairs and different.
No, actually on the bridge, um.
Oh, yeah. So we put them there, obviously, because there was obviously some serious holes. I mean, we could, we could not do those. But ultimately, when we finish that job this summer, it will be stamped concrete going down. Um, between the two, but we had to replace because it was just terribly inside. We were getting. Twelve to eighteen foot gaps where we had to piece those together. So that's why you see some of those new planks there. That's just for safety and just to get us through until this problem stops. But those planks also were. On some of the the entry entryways, especially out in Trestle Park, um. Stairs and things of that nature. I think you remember that Christmas time, ran into some of that. So that's what we're using those boards to stop and sell up.
There's some series I would not use.
Yeah.
Questions for Jeremiah? Thanks, Jeremiah. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
All right, Matt, time for you to come down. And you just said, tell me what I need to, the meetings are about to begin.
All the extra time we made up, we're gonna spend on you, Matt.
Yeah.
Give me one, why don't you get an hour?
All right, good evening. Um, we are just gonna go through a couple of the, uh. The funds that I look over, um, first beginning with Major Street Fund. Um. We are, in most of our accounts here, we are actually using a lot less, uh. Um, expenditures, we're expecting a lot less expenditures next year, um, just less projects, uh, we've been, uh. Uh, using a lot of our fund balance lately in the last couple of years, just trying to catch up on our streets. Um, and now that we have taken a healthy hit on our our fund balance, we're gonna try and back off a little bit and, um. And use a little bit more of what we are just bringing in each year. Um, so as you can see here. Uh, gas tax revenue, um, this is what we get from, uh, Act fifty one. This is state money that we get for. Gas tax and, um. Uh, medical and recreational marijuana. Um, so we are looking to get a an additional twenty nine thousand dollars this year. Um, which isn't a lot, but it certainly helps. Uh, as you can see, the use of fund balance is, uh, dropping drastically, um. This upcoming year. So, uh, the additional revenue revenues that we get from Major Street funding is, um, the trunk line maintenance. So we oversee M thirty four, two twenty three and M fifty two that run through town. Uh, we get paid for. For those through the state. Um. Capital projects this year for Major Street, we're looking to spend about a hundred and fifty thousand in resurfacing. And then, uh, one point, um, fourth, uh, one point four million, uh, for part two on Church Street. Um, Church Street was a two-part program, uh, we're currently, we currently started actually today on Church Street. Um, we have budgeted about seven hundred and fifty thousand. Uh, this budget cycle and then we're looking for another one point four next budget cycle, uh, to finish reconstruct on Church Street. Uh, so in total, uh, we're actually spending one point nine million less, uh, than last year. Um, reduction in capital improvements, store water and resurfacing. Our fund balance is sitting decent at four point or say four million. Local street, um. We are almost, uh, almost the same as far as our gas tax revenue, uh, eight thousand dollar increase. Um, use of fund balances drops significantly again. Um, additional revenues that we get for local street is the metro acts, um, the sidewalk assessments, special assessments. And then our our millage that we have currently for local streets only.
Do we have a, um. Current road rating report?
Yes, uh, we do one every year, every May we do one. So in May I'll have a twenty twenty four real rating. But if you'd like to see that, I can certainly send it off.
When we get it.
Yep.
Bill, with, uh, Church Street, as you go through there, will Park Place, uh, east and west? Will those approaches be, uh, addressed?
The whole road will be addressed and on the local street side, yeah. Yeah, actually on the next page, it it says, uh, Park Place east and west down there. Yeah, those are local streets, so, um, that whole, that whole area will be completely redone. Um, so on capital projects, we'll be spending about three hundred and fifty thousand less than last year. Uh, we're bumping up our resurfacing at three hundred and twenty thousand. Um, gonna mill and resurface Erie, uh, Park Place east and west. Uh, the whole Scott Ridge subdivision and Mill Street. And then in total, um, for local street, we'll be spending about five hundred and fifty thousand less. Um, and again, reduction in capital improvements, store water, but increase in resurfacing. Fund balance currently sitting about one point four. And that's our streets. Any questions on streets, major or local state?
I'll start with progress side, sidewalk assessments. How much do we collect in sidewalk assessments every year?
Uh, we collect probably. Eight to ten, eight to ten thousand each year.
So. I get a lot of questions about. We got a city boulevard. We have city trees on the boulevard and we got city sidewalks. And it's usually the city trees. That cut the roots that cause the sidewalk. And it would make the homeowner pay for it. It's a fairness issue in my, in my mind, why? Why do we expect, you know, it's only ten, hundred twelve thousand dollars? Why do we expect the homeowner to fund repairs that are caused by city property?
Pretty much universal, you know, it goes back to how subdivisions are evolved in the first place, when we develop a subdivision. A developer creates those remedies. And then it's the responsibility of the property owner to keep them up all the time.
But we're the property owner.
We're not, well.
We own the site.
The the benefiting property owner, we see Jason property.
Well.
Every city, every township, every village and state, that's how it's gonna.
Well, it's not fair to anybody, in my, in my opinion. I, I mean, just because it's always done that way, doesn't mean that we can't change it.
And in about the same token, you could say you shouldn't have to shovel the sidewalk, because it's the same sidewalk.
No, I don't.
Here, not everywhere.
Well, you could say you don't have to mow the boulevard either, but I think the homeowners don't have an issue with the sidewalk, with shoveling snow. Well, they do have some issues with that. But if it's not done, then that's an issue. But I just think paying for the damage caused by. You know, the ci- cities. Again, the city tree on the city boulevard disrupting the city sidewalk.
Yeah, if if the tree is causing a problem in the sidewalk, it's. Typically because the wrong kind of tree was planted there in the first place. Trees that are planted correctly and are deep rooted don't heat the sidewalks.
So the city planted the trees.
Well, I, you know, I don't know the plan for those trees, they're a hundred years old.
I I will say we do pay for a third of the hazardous sidewalk. So whether it's a tree that uprooted the sidewalk or it's just tea. We, the city still pays for a third of that sidewalk.
Well, that's good to know.
That is good to know, but.
Uh, I think I have people ask me about that too, you know, I. I use a a good example, I have four or five trees in front of my house. They needed to be pruned, they need to be dealt with. And I had the bid all ready to go, I had three people coming to do it and. One of the city workers stopped and said. Those are our trees. We take care of those and I said, well. How far are you right now? I said, well, we're about two hundred trees behind. And three days later, they came in and took care of those four or five trees and I paid nothing. Instead of the fifteen or eighteen hundred dollars I had bid with the tree service. Uh, there is good and bad. I didn't know we paid one third.
We pay a third of any hazardous sidewalk.
That's great. And our trees in the sense of everybody's trees, right? Trees in that location creates a canopy that is over the city that has all of that, that's the tree canopy has. For any place. How you, that's how you create it. We plant two per residential lot and along every street. And shade the street and then keep the stormwater cool and then keep the air clean. Everybody benefits.
I'm not arguing with the that trees aren't beneficial. Me with Maple City. So, yeah, I appreciate the trees. I just don't appreciate the damage that they do.
I get that. But then I had to remind them that. Because I was on the commission, we instituted that for pain, but they still think that's not fair. So, well. Sometimes things don't seem to be fair. So I I kind of agree with Gordon. Is there anything more we could do with that or? If it's only eight thousand dollars a year or. Just leave it alone, don't want to touch the issue because of everything it could cost. I think, you know, it either over all the residences in the city and all the properties in the city, it evens out. Everybody eventually replaces their son. You know, and everybody pays, someone replaces their son. And in the city, most lots should have a sidewalk, uh, you know, I bet you wish you had a sidewalk. You could have been the street.
You don't have a sidewalk?
I have a sidewalk.
When I get mine torn out, I'll bring it over. I'll give you my old one.
Where you, you know, and of course you need a storm sewer first to have a sidewalk. Problem.
Thanks for bringing that up, Gordon. That's, I was, I was just gonna mention the same thing. I just didn't know about the one third, that was, you know, that's part and piece, you know, we're doing something.
More than multiple places do.
That's true.
But that's only in the city we care. If I choose to replace my sidewalk.
We'll pay at our contractor's cost. So if you can get it done cheaper, we still pay at our contractor's cost. The one third.
One third become one half?
When I had mine repaired, uh, the city recommended. Thank, I thought the city recommended two or three different contractors that they were working with and. And I had, uh. Shug or somebody come out through that. I think. Or maybe the city prepared that.
We might have taken care of it, because shit was probably our contractor back.
Yes. Well, thanks for clarifying that.
And that thing about putting sidewalks everywhere? I was on putting sidewalks on Major Street. That was called un-American. I mean, I, people writing letters to the editor. I just said, that's made to happen. How can you not? Have a sidewalk there. Walkability, that that's so much to value of property. Mendus value and. Sounds a community when having. A complete system of sidewalks. Or at least connect, I mean. Connect the neighborhoods, that becomes a problem, at least it's there, but to get out to my neighborhood, there's. Like a horrible thing that's happening. A lot of development that isn't happening in town anymore, right? The land that's available is in the country. Row commissions don't want to pay to maintain streets anymore. So as a result. New developments end up with private streets. Private streets can't be interconnected. And you don't end up with a system of connected streets in neighborhoods and ways to go and you end up with serial conclaves where everybody don't. Exists in their own neighborhood.
Which is why everybody in the township's dragging and walk on our sidewalk, because they see him all the time.
Right.
Are their sidewalks in truck hills now? Also on streets?
Moving on to auto parking, now this is all of our parking lots downtown, the public parking that we provide. Um. We, uh, so we generate revenue based on these, uh, four, um, four sources, uh, the. Uh, general fund contribution, uh, tip, uh, special assessments and the fee estate, uh, those give us, uh, the hundred and. Uh, let's see, hundred and, two hundred and five. Two hundred and five thousand a year, uh, we're proposing to spend a hundred and ninety eight this year. Um, and this will include resurfacing all of our downtown parking lots. Just to back seal and seal coat. Fund balance currently sits at about one million dollars.
Does that include? Where we're putting gravel now and hopefully it'll be asphalt later?
It'll be asphalt, hopefully within the next, I'm hoping within the next month, it'll probably be related to. Uh, lights should be installed hopefully this week, if not next week.
Does construction move over?
What's that?
As the construction workers.
Not yet, uh, we, we're trying to get the lights installed this week. We'll put some more stone in and I've already talked to the, the contractor on site there and he's gonna move everyone over there. Um, as soon as we open, so.
And how many new spaces?
Uh, twenty four, I believe. Things twenty twenty spaces.
And there'll be some landscaping happening after that.
Once I talk to Jeremiah and confirm that, yes.
Uh, going backwards for a second, I just made me think of something when you said it, uh. Under capital projects where it says resurfacing, so that with the chip and fog seal, is that what you're talking about?
Yes, uh. Most likely chip and fog seal could be ultra thin overlay, it could be micro surface, but, uh, we found most banks are block using chip and fog seal.
Um, I've gotten a question too, and I don't know the answer to, um. I don't know what the O D A guidelines are for having handicap spots, what? What the numbers are, what the percentage of total parking needs to be handicap. You know, handicap spots, do we meet the requirement? This is the question.
Uh, yes, I I think it's one for every twenty five spots, do you remember?
It it doesn't stick with that, it starts with that, but it was increased in number.
Yeah. Uh, when they were all installed, um, well, within the last ten years, we we did a whole study on all that, so we should still be good. I know we've added a couple more spots, but, um, I can confirm that.
No, I just, I'm, like I said, it's, it's come up. Questions, I think it's been a little bit exasperated too, or exacerbated, um, by the construction going on in Church Street.
Oh, sure.
Makes it hard to get to the ones. Behind some of the businesses.
Um, solid waste fund, um, looking at about one point five million in expenditures. Uh, and those expenditures, which is not, uh, written in here, is a dumpster enclosure for eighty thousand dollars. Um, we're looking to try and install one. This budget year yet, um, so this one will be another one probably over. Uh, in. North parking, in North Main Lot. Um. So this, these expenditures include residential trash recycling, downtown trash, yard waste collection, bulk trash collection. All of our compost site operations and street sweeping. so this, these expenditures include residential trash recycling, downtown trash, yard waste collection, ball trash collection, all of our compost site operations, and street sweeping. Fund balance sits at about just over three hundred thousand. This is not a ball trash.
I was thinking of last year, right?
Last year, so we'll have one next year. That we will have a ball trash dumpster at compost site starting in May.
Starting in?
May, as soon as it opens, May fourth.
Greg, where are we with the, with the farm project, is that, that city perky still, is that owned by the?
No, that's owned by.
Possible.
Possible. We were, we have, we offered to take that over as, uh, take it over and maintain it.
Yeah.
And the city parking, they were not particularly anxious of, in that, for whatever reason. Offer remains on the table.
Is there been any talk on the compost site about, just asking, have already been asked, cause the weather got really nice? And people were doing yards, and every neighbor decided to pull up into my yard on the mower and ask why the compost sites don't open, it was great, I was trying to just enjoy the weather, but, uh, so, um, I, I, but that comes up a lot, actually, I, it's not the first time I've heard it, I've heard it from a lot of other people, um, as well, is there any thought, like, if the weather gets nicer, maybe we're opening earlier than we usually do?
Uh, actually, uh, my superintendent Eric Kelly and I have already talked about opening, um, uh, the first Tuesday in April, um, and just running it Tuesdays for a couple hours. There will, there'll be a press release on that.
Tuesday afternoon?
Yeah, just Tuesday afternoon for a couple hours, just to at, at least help to facilitate some people through.
How, how do we change out the dumpster there? Is it when it's full, we get a new one in there, or what's?
Uh, yeah, so we're changing, we usually leave two dumpsters out there, and we replace one each week. Um, and they, they fill up quick.
And truly do.
That's a great benefit.
It's, it's, yeah.
Great, great thing about that.
I think a lot of people are getting leaves and stuff, and really doing that cleanup with that weather being nicer, and now.
It'll only be yard waste, it will not be ball trash.
Right, right.
But can we go with that first Tuesday of April, or is that not a decided thing?
Not, not yet. I will confirm that, um, probably this week or next.
Thanks, I think that will save, uh, guys' backs too.
Yeah.
Loading into the trucks as well.
Thank you.
Yep.
I just feel like it's been getting warmer and warmer every spring, and I, I asked that every spring, as soon as it got warm.
And spring yard waste collection will, is the third and fourth weekend in April, or third and fourth week, third and fourth Wednesday of April.
Is there any further discussion, Gordon and I had a business owner, um, talk to us about, uh, downtown trash rates? So is that, um, that, or is there any further discussion?
We'll, we'll see how our dumpster enclosure construction goes.
Yes.
You know, that, the downtown trash fee pays for that. Part of the program is to expand the number of available dumpsters. So, you know, it's, we, we, the bids have come in for the enclosures that we've looked at have been much higher than what we hoped. They won't be adjusted down.
Cause I, I think the concern that, that we heard was a, uh, paper-based business with confidential paper, where they have an outside company come in and recycle, and essentially they're net zero with two buildings, so they're charged double.
So are vacant buildings, but we don't want them, you know, paying nothing.
I've paid for trash for six years.
What you're paying is for the potential of your property. System we came up with, real simple, every address pays the same. Conclusion that we came to after all the meetings we had about it, which were very high, was that, was that, you know, it's like the car wash now, it's ten bucks to get in, and I might just use the vacuum, but overall, it's a good deal for everybody. Couldn't possibly access a dumpster for that price. You are a downtown property owner, why you choose to use your property for is up to you, but the fee for it participating in the downtown system is two hundred and forty dollars.
So this, one of the specific complaints we got.
Hmm, is it four forty?
Two forty, residential.
I think it's four forty.
It's four forty. Oh, residential, okay.
Yeah, residential's two forty downtown.
I have searched, yeah.
The specific complaint that we got was when doing it by buildings, a building like the gallery of shops that has twelve businesses in it is getting a break compared to a single or two businesses in one building.
They have multiple addresses.
Do they have multiple addresses?
Yeah, but if they have multiple addresses, that's fine.
That is.
There was a question followed from the same person, uh, at the time we instituted it.
We'll talk about the addresses.
And when is that site gonna be, the, the enclosure? Where did you say that was going to be?
Uh, I believe we're gonna do, yeah, you mind, is it the North Main, or North Winter Lot, or? I know I did, yeah.
North Winter.
North Winter, okay.
That's why when you said that.
Yeah.
But I, that's what.
Behind the gas, and we'll, and we'll give you ample notice.
So, so. It'll be North Winter, not South Winter. South Winter will be getting one too, but that'll be happening with the Maiden Lane project.
Okay.
Moving on to building maintenance. Um, expenditures are pretty much the same, um, from last year. Uh, capital improvements is going up a little bit, we're looking to finish, uh, installing new windows in City Hall. This was, we've been doing this over a couple of years now, this will be the last installment we, we have, so hopefully after next year, we'll have complete new windows in all of City Hall. Uh, city flooring, we're looking to replace the first floor and the third floor. Third floor has some carpet stuck from the seventies, it looks like, and, uh, first floor, the tiles are, um, starting to warp up, so replace both first and third floors carpet or flooring. Uh, police department, they have a urinal that needs replaced. Um, it's not just a urinal, though, it's, uh, all the plumbing, it's kind of filled with concrete at the moment. Um, so that will be replaced and repaired, uh, flooring, flooring, urinal, and all plumbing. Um, the cemetery is looking to finish their barn that, that was constructed probably five, six years ago, seven years ago now. Um, this includes heat and electric. We're looking to add a director's office in the parks facility for twenty-five thousand, and then, um, we're hoping to take almost the remainder of the Swiger trust funds, um, and improve the, uh, H V A C over at Fielder Center. And the fund balance currently sits at about forty thousand.
Building, so the, the fee building, um, that we got from, uh, that addressed in here.
No.
So liquidated, is that part of that, or?
No.
Is there any plan, or just?
We kinda, we haven't even gotten in there yet, um. I think there will be value to some of the items that we inherited, so to speak, um. Building needs work as well, I, you know, unclear, we'll have to have a discussion once we become the owner. I hope to do, isn't even something we wanna pay ownership of. But my hope would be that there'll be a part in between the value of the thing, the personal property that's inside basic repairs that it needs to be stabilized.
What property are you talking about?
It's the fee house. Been advised with a beneficiary of that as well, but
Uh, the Adrian Inn, is that in this discussion, or is that?
Uh, well, it can be anytime you want, I guess, it's not, there's no real budget items for it. We don't get a rep, we don't really shoulder any expenses. Well, kind of that is if you, if you wanna talk about it.
So that, that's it, in terms of costs and pass-throughs or anything like that?
Yeah, I, I mean, we leased that for three years to Housing Help a little over a year ago. Our, the situation is different than what we thought it was going to be when we leased it. We had understood Housing Help and Sure that weren't, were merging at that time, and they were process of merging at that time, and that's what we expected, and we expected it to be a transitional housing facility and for nature with a shelter, but, uh, that hadn't happened. Now Housing Help has it, yeah. They're doing what they're doing with it. There's still probably, last I knew, there was about fifty River View residents in there. So, we don't want, gotta fingers crossed, the next month, they'll be able to start moving back to review, yeah, spotting inspections or nothing. Review this month, it should. Right, you know, and then our interest in what we initially set out to acquire the Adrian Inn for will have been completed, right? We wanted a place for the River View people to land. Then we'll have to have a discussion about what that looks like as the Housing Health lease expires in the year. We are, for the first time, going through there to level the property, and so Jake has inspection scheduled, I think. It's either this week or next. Out there, they began going room by room through that property, some of the rooms, Matt and I went out there and did a surprise inspection, uh, a few months back, and some of them were not handled based on, you know, the situation that occupants had a lot, that allowed to get the rooms into. We had a program when we were running it briefly, having a weekly cleaning of the rooms, offering a linen service, so the, the linens would be laundered once a week. And I think they, they clearly haven't maintained that. One room we looked at was literally folded, see a little trash, and this person in there amidst that flies. And then I guess it must have been water, water, that one flies, buzzing out the room.
Well, Housing Health is not meeting their obligation.
It does not seem so, but we'll, we'll know better after Jake goes through there. You know, I think there are fiscal plan issues, I know there are, cause they were there when we were there, water heaters leaking like sobs. We have not been approached about them, at least, so we'll work cooperatively on any major capital expenses like that, cause we're not approached by them about that, but I can't wait to replace those water heaters, and that's gonna get a fee and a level housing inspection and stuff as well. I have a lot of things there. That building is just not in great shape. It's okay for a temporary solution for a temporary problem, but, uh, you know, at the time that we acquired it, that we were approached by a hotel operator to look into whether they would be interested in taking it when we were done, and their conclusion was that the building has to be demolished. It's not usable as a, as a motel anymore. There's too many things that need to be, uh, replaced, that's a clear expectation. But, uh, the decks of the building are all shot and bowing, you know? Probably doesn't have.
That cost was eight ninety, somewhere around a thousand.
Oh, the total, we had Kriegoff go through and do an estimate, uh, like a wish list estimate of everything, you remember what the number was?
I don't have it off the top of my head.
Do I have a purchase, purchase price?
Purchase price.
Oh, we bought, right, eight ninety. But their repairs that they estimated were more like a million.
Oh, yeah.
I think it was one of them.
I bet you it was more than five million.
And I, that was a tough decision for the vote board, but it was either that or put all these people on the streets. And we didn't really have another option.
That was emergency.
How many were in there or condition?
Uh, we had the rooms full, so.
Seventy?
Hundred and fifty.
Um, I think we're about the hundred and twenty range.
So there's fifty now, how many?
Last I knew, there were about fifty people still there.
Oh, from River View, but there were.
We don't have any information on.
Moving on to general fund. Um, Public Works, uh, so you see a huge expenditure coming out, but that number will get distributed through all, all, all of the other funds that they work on, uh, they don't, um, it just hits general fund, and then we charge back, um, from major street and local streets, um, and solid waste and whatnot. Um, so there's, there's not gonna be much of a change there. Um, we are looking to purchase a one-ton truck this year with a blade and a salt box. Um, thirty-eight thousand of it will be, uh, coming out of this year's budget, and then the remainder will be coming out of our funds. Um, and we're also looking to seal the parking lot, um, at D P W. Major changes are increasing wages, overtime for events and building space allocation. Um, and then down to, uh, engineering, um, there's just the, uh, uh, difference of ten thousand dollars, um, and that's mostly just the wages. Any questions on your other fund?
Thank you.
Any done?
Thank you, Matt. All right, well, we have finished the peronal presentations, are there any general questions on the budget that Nathan and I can attempt to answer, or?
In terms of revenues, uh, you're showing a two hundred thousand dollar increase in marijuana taxes, uh?
We got six fifty-nine this year, so I think we, we have budgeted very conservatively at five hundred, and so we sunk it off at seven hundred for months. Sales will continue to increase, that's been mentioned. It's always a a bit of a mystery, because the way the formula works is if there are larger number of licensed establishments, that increases the denominator for dividing up the fund, so. But, friends, they're gonna be increasing their revenue.
There's a, under inspections, um, there's a seventy-two thousand dollar increase in that, which is pretty substantial, is that just another?
We intend to look at fees, they haven't been, the fee schedule that they use, which is the state's fee schedule, hasn't been adjusted since twenty thirteen. You know, the part, that division of the community development department does not pay for itself, it'll come close paying for itself. Closer than wide.
You know, the one thing I've noticed in the future, things with the new administration stage, the changes that they made in, uh, negotiation strategies and things like that, and the cost of retirement, but it's gonna, it, to me, it appears that's gonna just compound every year with what we have to keep adjusting to keep paying, keep up. So, we look to the future.
Yeah, well, we gotta grow our revenues, right, and, we don't, you still don't have the final number from the system. Um, taxable value.
She mentioned the meeting, she was working on that.
Right, but we, this, this was a pretty conservative revenue number probably in here right now, because we don't have all the difference in taxable value, or we've just had, and so Kristen's working out the numbers to give the main, uh, for new taxable value of the city. So revenues are likely to go up over what we have projected right now, but, yeah, the point is still the same. Particularly as you're dealing with personal costs, they're just gonna go up. Pension costs, even though we don't have anybody being added to the pension, just gonna go up for foreseeable future. So we have to find other ways, if we're gonna keep doing all the things we wanna do. So we have to find other ways if we're going to keep doing all the things we want to do. Really look for every event of revenues.
Yeah, especially when you see that we had like a lot of ARPA on here, and we're not going to have that.
No, that's a good.
That's scary, yes.
Pandemic was good to us in that sense, and we had a lot of, even before the ARPA year, first year I was administrator, we had, uh, what was the program called with, with public safety wages? I don't remember the name of it, but we got a big chunk of money of pandemic relief that was deemed to be, it was supposed to be for pandemic expenses, but the fiction was that any public safety wages were pandemic expenses. So we were able to plug it in and move, I feel like it was six hundred and fifty, something like that. Now we're able to move what we'd already budgeted for wages over into capital, and that was how we began to restore the capital purchasing in the top. And then ARPA, and ARPA again, ARPA's petering out. We've got, you know, with the other revenue sources going forward, if we're going to continue to grow like we Uh, the other, so one other thing I want to add is, of course, your strategic plan envisions adding several positions, and we are adding one, in, well, kind of two things in here that are new positions. We have restoring the economic development position, his budgeted within the community development department budget. And then we moved the deputy clerk to a full-time position going forward from a part-time position. Of course, have fulfilled the objective of having a bilingual person at City Hall and want that person to be there full-time. Kind of become the recessionist, right? Hoping City Hall as well, up going forward, so, you know, but that's failed. Actually, that's costs that don't change year over year, you know, they're there every year.
And that economic development is full fund?
Yeah.
Not combined with any?
Well, we, we're intending to, and it's no secret, I intend to move Jay into that position. He will get a stipend related to the Main Street Director duties that largely come out of D to J. You will pay him a salary for, you know, the economic development coordinator position. And that's what the position was before we even cut it, and it's similar to that. So we just were restoring that.
I think that kind of runs contrary to some of the, the questions we were all asked as candidates in terms of your position doing two full-time jobs, and now Jay taking on two full-time jobs.
Well, that's, I mean, in that fact case, you know, I mean, it's one thing as it relates to me. But in that, that was what that position always was. The economic development coordinator was a D to J director as well. Wasn't a Main Street director, so it's a little bit, bit different, but it's the same job, pretty much the same job description.
I, I would think that when you look at Tecumseh, they have two people in those roles?
They don't have a community development director as such. In fact, that's why the loss of their economic development director was because you wanted to be the community development director and then promoted to that position. They kind of let their building official oversee that. They had a big guy, a person devoted the economic development to the subject and community development.
I guess my, my concern is just how, if Jay's already doing a forty-hour, uh, a week job, how do we create more hours in the day for him?
Uh, so they are hiring, yeah, to that point, they're hiring a marketing and events coordinator. So I want to talk to Jay about this, what, you know, what do you need off your plate to be able to have time to devote to economic development generally, and that's what he does. Piece of what he does now. Uh, when we originally established our relationship with him as the market manager, you know, and then then the street director, and he briefly had the market manager off his plate, and now it's back on. But the new person that they are looking to add will do market management, marketing for the D and General Aid and Events promotion as well. Taking those things off his plate, we hope that we can add the rest of the city in terms of economic development. A big part of economic development work that we do in any event is downtown. So it's not with our partnership with Lenoir Now, it's not that much more to do the economic development work that is outside of downtown. Really, Lenoir Now is very focused on industrial. So really, all we're doing is, you know, everything.
What emphasis will be placed on housing?
I mean, housing is a big priority for us in terms of our overall policies for the community development. And of course, you know, we're working on adopting a new zoning ordinance that will be very housing-friendly and provide other options for housing, alternative dwelling units, removing minimum or reducing minimum lot sizes, allowing additional something that's quite right, residential districts essentially, I'm going away from remains to be approved, they're kind of going away from the same zoning that many communities are. So we think all of those things, you know, we're a built-out city from all, there's infill projects here and there. Yeah, but if you can use property that exists more efficiently and add guns to the property that exists, that's the way we can.
And there will be a dedicated staff for that.
And, you know, and other than that, it's a piece of the economic development.
You mentioned the, uh, economic development coordinator and a full-time deputy clerk. What about the communication and marketing position that is in the strategic plan?
Yeah, I agree, it's in there. I mean, I did add more money to the marketing budget, but not a higher person for that. Seeing what that's.
Uh, OPIAD settlement funds, we talk about how those are going to be used, or is that just collect?
Uh, so far, it's just collecting. All of it's in there.
Twenty-five thousand.
So, but I don't do all that much with my, I know, they're going into a fund, it's our own. Reasonable amount of money to use for some purpose.
We are allocated a hundred and ninety-two thousand, it's the last time I checked, and then, but some potential based on the spring court ruling that will be coming out in June, most likely that will have the big settlement from, um, OPIAD producer too. So upwards of five billion dollars coming there.
So that'll be a future discussion if anyone is, uh, reasonable module of money that they're using or anything.
I, I mean, I would just say I'm not a fan of people picking up stipends and taking on two full-time jobs. Um, the same with, um, community development, the same with communications, and how we can get more staff when we actually need more people to do those things.
Well, the good things about, thing about stipends is that they are a lot cheaper than additional full-time employees. Additional full-time employees cost less than a hundred thousand dollars. Stipend might be funny.
Yeah, I mean, the conversation that Gordon and I had this last, uh, week with constituents related to that concept of people not answering the phones, not being able to get back to them. And then, you know, the, hate to say it, the Chicago syndrome, where you need to call your alderman or your commissioner to make that contact with, um, someone in City Hall or City Service to get something done, and unfortunately, that's had to happen in some, some situations, so how we can make sure that, you know, phone calls are answered, phone calls are returned, and that residents feel that they don't need to come to us, because the last thing that needs to be in terms of a middle person to make that, that connection. So having people, having that part, someone there to talk to and answer the phone, I think would be beneficial for, um, all of our residents.
Yeah, right now, we're in unfortunate circumstance where, uh, if you push zero, you know, the home trade you go to Michelle Dewey's line. So as of Thursday, we're giving her one day to get her feet under, that will go to the deputy clerk's, uh, phone. She'll be there for the five person tracking people, I shouldn't say who the people are, you know, to, uh, uh, the appropriate places, give them a life. How's she doing? How's Michelle doing? Pretty good, pretty good, because she's starting to do a couple hours work, uh, from home each day.
I think we also need to remind residents that for a lot of our city staff, I, I don't want them sitting at their office because I want co-enforcement out on the way. I, I want Jay out talking to businesses and on the streets and in conferences and working on grants that, that it's not always that the, that there isn't anyone at City Hall, even though there may not be, but then they need to leave a message, just like I had to leave a message yesterday because my furnace went out, and I didn't give a fuck. So there are people who are working, and they're, they're Matt is riding the streets and Jeremiah is helping cutting a tree down. They're not at their desks, and I don't want all of our city staff to be at our desk. And I understand that, you know, there are times where it's frustrating if you feel like, you know, you just have to talk to someone. But there's lots of businesses, I mean, if I call them, you know, whatever, Senator Wobino's office, I'm going to have to leave a message. I'm not going to have someone who's just going to be there.
I, I don't disagree, Mary, but so often the voicemail boxes are full, you can't even leave a message.
Well, that's a problem.
There, the overflow voicemail box is full, and that's for the reason that I told you when the
Because zero goes to Michelle.
Zero goes to Michelle. Uh, and in fact, I had it go on today and cleared that out, but, um, you know, we all, to the degree we get voicemails, we also get them in our email. So we all have smartphones, we all see those messages. I get all my mail, all my voicemails.
The transcript.
I get, not a transcript, but I can listen to it on my phone immediately. So I can all, you know, we all do, and we all get our messages and we return our calls. You know, the fact that I don't pick up the phone, or if somebody doesn't pick up the phone the minute you call, doesn't mean we're not going to respond or deal with the message that you leave.
And I, I think maybe as we look, re-look at the strategic plan in the next version, um, how do we go about evaluating our level of customer service? Because the feedback of customer service level varies by individual, and some people have great experiences, other people don't, so you know, how, how do we have a, uh, a baseline of how we're performing as an organization providing customer service to our residents and business owners and visitors? Could be a possibility of something. I know a Delta user.
We're not confident.
All right.
All right, that's time for public comment. Just to reiterate, there's a three-minute time limit, and for the record, please state your name and address, and we will begin inside the city chambers first. All right, hearing no, oh, go ahead.
Yeah, Doug Spade, I do have a comment.
Address, please.
I have a comment.
Address, please, though.
Last one, last one. I have a comment about that, too. I think you need to address the address issue. Uh, several of you have talked about it for a long time, nothing has happened. But what I do have to tell you is, whether people are out working or not, there's nothing that beats good old-fashioned customer service. When somebody calls City Hall, they should get a call back. We hear it all the time, people who don't, and I'm one who doesn't. When news media calls and asks about something, we didn't have to wait three weeks. I've, I've asked for things, we've never gotten it. We've emailed and called. And if that zero goes to Michelle, who else knows that in the public? You guys should have an obligation to make that zero go somewhere else if she's not here. The citizens don't know what's happened to Michelle. They don't know why they don't get a response when it hits zero. And I can't tell you how many times we hear, nobody at City Hall returns my call. I understand not answering it, but it's the returning thing, whether you want to think so or not. It is a PR problem that you guys have. Good customer service goes a long way when you want citizens to do what they're supposed to do.
Hearing no more public comment, inside the chambers, we will now open it up to Zoom participants.
Hello, Wookiee Roberts for twenty-two South Winter Street, can you hear me all right?
Yes, we can.
All right, so, uh, I also agree, I have concerns about having to give your address as well. I have had many community members mention that that makes them feel unsafe. I hope you guys are going to consider revisiting that policy. And I also want to bring up concerns about the customer service, echoing some of the comments you've heard. I've had situations where some employees, I send them an email, give them a call, and I hear back within the next day. I've had some employees where I have called week after week and have not gotten a reply for over a month. And in some cases, I still have not gotten a reply. So I agree, they should be out there doing things, and yeah, maybe they do miss my call, but they should have an answering machine that has room in it still, and they should return that call as soon as they're able. Again, I've gone through situations where that has not happened at all. Thank you.
Hearing no more public comment, may I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Support.
All in favor, say aye.
All right, aye.
Meeting is adjourned, we will begin outside in the chambers at seven oh five.
I call to order the Adrianian City Commission meeting for March eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. If everyone would please rise for a moment of silence and the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge this to the God of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Mayor Heath?
Present.
Commissioner Banky?
Present.
Commissioner Schwartz?
Present.
Commissioner Roberts?
Present.
Commissioner Miller?
Present.
Commissioner Castleberry? Absent. Commissioner Gauss?
Present.
All commission members present, with the exception of Commissioner Castleberry.
May I get a motion to excuse Commissioner Castleberry?
Support.
I have a motion from Commissioner Gauss with a second from Commissioner Roberts and Commissioner Miller. Roll call, please.
Mayor Heath?
Yes.
Commissioner Banky?
Yes.
Commissioner Schwartz?
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Gauss?
Yes.
Approved with unanimous vote.
May I get a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
I have a motion from Commissioner Banky with a second from Commissioner Roberts. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Banky?
Yes.
Commissioner Schwartz?
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Gauss?
Yes.
Mayor Heath?
Yes.
Approved with unanimous vote.
May I get a motion to adopt the consent agenda?
So moved.
Support.
I have a motion from Commissioner Roberts with a second from Commissioner Miller. I have a motion from Commissioner Roberts with a second from Commissioner Miller. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Schwartz?
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Gauss?
Yes.
Mayor Heath?
Yes.
Commissioner Banky?
Yes.
Approved with unanimous vote.
Moving on to our regular agenda under resolutions, resolution R twenty-four dash zero eleven is from Human Resources. It is a resolution to approve the Technical Professional and Office Workers Association of Michigan Adrian Public Employees Association Union Contract Settlement. May I get a motion to adopt the resolution?
Move to adopt the resolution.
Or.
Are there any public comments in regards to this resolution? Are there any commissioner comments? We have a motion from Commissioner Roberts with a second from Commissioner Gauss. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Robert?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Gauss?
Yes.
Mayor Heath?
Yes.
Commissioner Banky?
Yes.
Commissioner Schwartz?
Yes.
With unanimous vote.
Resolution R twenty-four dash zero twelve is from Community Development. It is a resolution to recommend approval of a social district permit for one zero one East Mommy LLC, Mommy Street Tap Room and Kitchen. May I get a mo- motion to adopt the resolution?
Move to adopt the resolution.
Support.
Are there any public comments in regards to this resolution? Are there any commissioner comments? We have a motion from Commissioner Roberts with a second from Commissioner Banky. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Gauss?
Yes.
Mayor Heath?
Yes.
Commissioner Banky?
Yes.
Commissioner Schwartz?
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts?
Yes.
Motion approved by unanimous vote.
Commissioners, there are miscellaneous reports in your packet. Are there any questions or comments on those? Alright, moving on to public comment. Just to reiterate, there's a three-minute time limit, and for the record, please state your name and address. We will start inside the city chambers first. When we have exhausted all public comment inside the chambers, we will then open it up to Zoom participants. We will now open it up to all Zoom participants. Hearing no public comment, are there any commissioner comments?
Yes, there is.
Commissioner Banky?
I think we heard tonight, uh, again, another example from uh from our public as it relates to uh the address issue. We've seen this in uh editorials from our local newspapers. We've uh gotten guidance from the Michigan Municipal League and their model uh uh public comment conference from uh from Westland, and yet uh we continue to remain silent on it. And uh we continue to uh have individuals that choose not to give their address um risking their their safety and the concerns that they have because our um meetings are broadcast on YouTube and uh what's risk of personal harm, and I guess I don't understand, I've asked to have this place on a uh pre-meeting topic and it hasn't, and um I guess I don't know how long we're gonna continue to move forward with this when we have no rhyme or reason except for it's always been done this way um as an answer. And I think that relates to the issue I really wanted to speak on tonight because over the last several weeks, Adrian has made state, local, and national news as a result of the choices and decisions that run contrary to the reason why I moved to the city. We have heard a multitude of attacks or pressures on marginalized communities, and most recently a local educational institution's decision to turn graduation into a lightning rod of division instead of a torch of unity. On social media, comments indicated that some of our residents were not good enough, were not welcome, should go somewhere else, or their accomplishments do not count here. I would like to officially say the contrary. To our college students, LGBT students, and LGBTQ residents, welcome to Adrian. You are valued, you are accepted, and wanted as a member of our community, even though you may hear others say the opposite. To those of you that have been victims of bullying and harassment, we can do better to provide supports for you in our community, to provide a spot at the table for you and to embrace you as an individual while providing appropriate protections against hate. Continue to hold us accountable, please. To our transgendered residents, your accomplishments on the athletic field, the battlefield, the classroom, the stage, and the workplace all make a difference in who we are as a community and a city. Thank you for being here and continuing to make our city a better place to call home. To our college students that are graduating shortly, I am sorry that the spotlight has been cast towards a loaded political speaker instead of allowing your accomplishments to shine bright. As a community, we must do better to honor, respect, and welcome all of our residents to our community, our home where safety, public engagement, and peace can prevail. Thank you, that's all I have.
Hearing no more commissioner comments, may I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.